We will go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this regular city council meeting. It is Tuesday, October 26th. And we will get this meeting started. I'd like to call this meeting to order and let the public know that the city council can reach us into executive session if we so choose to. With that, can we get roll call?
Mayor Evans. Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Whelan.
Present.
Thank you so much. And with that, Councilmember Odegaard, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Give me one sec. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Salas, would you like to read our city's mission statements?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Odegaard, did you want to say something?
No. Vice Mayor, I just wanted, when you said thank you, I just said you're welcome.
Thank you very much. So that brings us down to item number four of our agenda, which is public participation. And I just want to let the public know that you are welcome to engage with us during public participation agenda items, along with every agenda item on our agenda. So to do that, you just need to email. The email address listed on our agenda, which is publiccomments@flagstaffaz.gov, with your first and last name, your phone number, and the agenda item you'd wish to speak on. And when it's time to take your comment, a staff member will call you, and you will have three minutes to engage with us, just as you would at City Hall if we were meeting in person. So that is how public comments is working. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Vice Mayor, we have two.
Hello, it's Veronica.
And Veronica, you are on with City Council, and your three minutes has begun.
Okay. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Shimonie and councilmembers. I'm Veronica Bloody, the manager of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Water Sense Program, which is focused on helping Americans find simple ways to save water through the use of more water-efficient products, practices, and professionals. I'm very happy to be able to join you today from Washington, D.C. with happy news. While I hope you are familiar with Water Sense, I want to emphasize just a few points. We operate as a voluntary partnership program. I like to say that we wear the white hat at EPA. Our partners include manufacturers who make products, retailers who sell them, and promotional partners. I consider water utilities to be our most critical promotional partner because they are in the front lines of communicating with customers. Thus, much of our programming is focused on working with them and giving them tools to make their jobs easier. We have more than 2,000 partners across the country, including 71 in Arizona, and they've helped us save more than 4.4 trillion gallons of water and 87 billion in consumer bills. One of the highlights of my year is the annual recognition of our Partners of the Year, those who have gone above and beyond our expectations in promoting the program. This year, we had 29 awards, which we normally would have presented last week in Las Vegas at the Water Smart Innovations Conference. But COVID-19 had other things in mind, so I am announcing them tomorrow during a webinar in affiliation with the conference. And I'm very happy to join you here today to recognize Flagstaff's water conservation program as a winner for excellence in promoting Water Sense labeled products for your efforts in 2019. I know that Flagstaff has made a commitment to water efficiency and being a national leader in water conservation. I've had my eye on the city for a few years, particularly when I saw the, first saw the H2O the Musical video that your staff put out to raise awareness. It is truly one of my favorites. I play it periodically to pump myself up and was pleased to be able to share it with the entire conference audience a couple of years ago during our awards ceremony. I've been impressed with the public outreach efforts of the water conservation program. As I said, as a voluntary program working to help consumers save water, energy, and money, we need to rely on the efforts of many others to help us spread the word about Water Sense labeled products. Flagstaff has stepped up to help both residences and businesses make the switch to efficiency. We were particularly pleased to see their efforts to reach out to the multifamily sector. Going forward, I'd encourage you to consider how our EPA Water Score could also help properties look for opportunities to save. I would say that Flagstaff is certainly on the way to demonstrating how a small community can be a national example of how to work with its citizens to ensure resilience to its water resources. I look forward to seeing what they have in store for the future. Again, congratulations and best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Veronica. Any comments or questions for the speaker? I don't see any by council. We can move on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Tamara Lalas.
Thank you, Stacy. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tamara Lalas, Water Conservation Manager. The Staff and Water Resources Conservation are very proud to inform you that the water conservation program has received two national recognitions over the past few weeks. The first item of note is that, as you just heard, we've received an excellence award for promoting labeled products from the EPA Water Sense Program. The annual awards from Water Sense are perhaps the most prestigious awards in our industry each year, and we were amongst the winners this year thanks to our efforts to get Water Sense certified fixtures out into the Flagstaff community through our commercial and residential rebate programs and our free fixture giveaways. Our council-driven commercial rebate program helped exchange over 1,000 old toilets just last year, the vast majority of which were rated at less than a gallon per flush, which exceeds the requirements of the city code. The second one I wanted to mention is the addition of Flagstaff to the Alliance for Water Efficiency's leaderboard, which is awarded to water utilities that voluntarily incorporate the American Water Works Association's best water conservation practices across the water utility. These best practices include items such as dedicated conservation staff, a landscape efficiency program, and water conservation actions adopted into city code, amongst other things. Flagstaff is the first Arizona utility to be listed among the 13 that have made it to the leaderboard, and this is an achievement we're really proud of because these standards are a great way to make sure that we are objectively achieving at a high level in water conservation. We are very proud and honored to have been given both of these national recognitions, and we are so appreciative of city council's support and encouragement as we've grown our programming these past several years. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And congratulations to the whole city and the whole team. Really good work, and I'm really proud to be part of this community on this topic. Any comments or questions for Ms. Salas? Not seeing any. We're going to go ahead and move down our agenda to item number five, which is appointments. And 5A is consideration of appointments Parks and Recreation Commission. And there are two appointments we're going to be making tonight since the mayor is not joining us this evening. And Councilmember Salas and Councilmember McCarthy are going to be providing us those appointments. So Councilmember Salas, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I am glad to nominate the appointment of Mr. Richard Conway to the Parks and Rec Commission. He brings experience, expertise as a professional and certified Parks and Rec professional. So yeah, I move to nominate, or appoint, I move to appoint Mr. Richard Conway to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Jim McCarthy.
Thank you so much, Councilmember McCarthy. There is a motion to appoint Richard Conway by Councilmember Salas, with a second by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I move that we appoint Mr. Austin Kerr, I guess you pronounce it Kerr, to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring in August of 2023.
There's a motion by Councilmember McCarthy. Is there a second?
This is Charlie. I'll provide the second.
I'm going to take Councilmember Salas on the second to appoint Austin Kerr to a position expiring August 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. That brings us down to our consent agenda. And council, is there anything you would like to pull from the consent agenda? Not seeing anything. Councilmember McCarthy?
I'd like to move to approve consent items 6A, B, and C.
Thank you for that motion, Councilmember McCarthy. Is there a second to approve our consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. There's a motion to approve our consent agenda, A, 6A, B, and C, by Councilmember McCarthy, with a second by Councilmember Whelan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. That brings us down to 7A, which is our routine items agenda. And 7A is consideration and approval of a memorandum of understanding and consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2020-24. Memorandum of Understanding with the Coconio County for members of the Coconio County Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council to serve as ex officio members of the City of Flagstaff Indigenous Commission and an ordinance to of the city council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, by adding a new chapter 2-26, creating an Indigenous Commission. Staff's recommendation is that we approve the memorandum of understanding and read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the final time.
Vice Mayor, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Whelan, is there a second?
I'll second that, Salas.
Councilmember Salas, there's a motion by Councilmember Whelan, with a second by Councilmember Salas to approve the MOU. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor, this is Sterling. I did want to indicate to you that the Board of Supervisors will be reviewing and approving this at some date in the future. However, it has cleared their legal department. We're just awaiting that for their approval on their end.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor, I move to read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the final time.
I'll second that, Salas.
This is Charlie. I'll provide the second.
I'm going to take Councilmember Whelan's motion and Ms. Salas's second to read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the final time. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title II, Boards and Commissions, by adding a new chapter 2-26, creating an Indigenous Commission, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-24?
And this is Charlie. I'll move to adopt.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Odegaard and a second by Councilmember Whelan to adopt ordinance number 2020-24. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. That brings us down to item 8A of our regular agenda, and this is consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2020-58, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the University of Arizona for water education through the Arizona Project Wet. Staff's recommendation is that we read Resolution Number 2020-58 by title only and then adopt.
Vice Mayor, I move to read Resolution Number 2020-58 by title only.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. There's a motion to read Resolution 2020-58 by Councilmember Whelan and a second by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Vice Mayor, I do have something to say.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I can't get my typing quick enough for you, so you'll just have to bear with me for a minute. You know, as a teacher for many, many years in the school district, I just wanted to say that this partnership with the University of Arizona, City of Flagstaff, is a fantastic one. So it not only educates our fourth graders, but it also educates teachers to teach, and it just keeps on going. So I'm glad council hopefully will move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of the University of Arizona for water education through Arizona Project Wet.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt Resolution 2020-58.
Second, McCarthy.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-58 by Councilmember Whelan, with a second by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, council. That brings us down to 8B of our agenda, which is consideration and approval of a grant application and acceptance upon award. U.S. Department of Justice 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $20,751. And staff's recommendation is that we approve the U.S. Department of Justice grant application to the Flagstaff Police Department for grant funds in the amount of $20,751.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Chad Smith, Support Services Manager for Flagstaff Police Department, with you this evening to answer any questions and request to respectfully approve acceptance of this 2020 Justice Assistance Grant Award.
Council, any questions? Is there a motion?
So Vice Mayor, this is Charlie. I move to approve 8B.
Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
We got a motion to approve the grant, item number 8B on our agenda, by Councilmember Odegaard, with a second by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Whelan, you were in favor, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. That brings us down to 8C of our agenda, which is consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2020-55, a resolution approving the, an intergovernmental agreement, IGA grant approval between the City of Flagstaff and Coconio County regarding joint application for grant funding from the Department of Justice fiscal year 2020 Edward, 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant JAG program. Staff's recommendation is that we read the Resolution Number 2020-55 by title only and adopt. Council? Is there a motion, or does anyone have any questions?
This is Jim McCarthy. I move to read Resolution 2020-55 by title only.
Is there a second?
Second, Salas.
There's a motion to read 2020-55 by Councilmember McCarthy by title only, and a second by Ms. Salas. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Coconio County and the City of Flagstaff for the application for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program for fiscal year 2020, local solicitation slash CFDA number 16.738.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-55?
So moved, Vice Mayor.
Second. Second, McCarthy.
We have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-55 by Councilmember Whelan, and a second by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us down to 8D of our agenda, which is consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2020-56, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving the Flagstaff Alliance for the Second Century Intergovernmental Agreement between the Northern Arizona University, City of Flagstaff, Coconio County, Community College District, Flagstaff Unified School District, and Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority. Staff's recommendation is that we read the Resolution Number 2020-56 by title only and then adopt.
Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. This is Stacy Breckland-Aggs, the Grants and Contracts Manager. Just a couple points of reference on this IGA. This IGA with the Alliance for Second Century has been in place for many years and is helpful for us for purchasing, conducting, and administrating cooperative procurement with materials, services, and construction. This new IGA adds a new member to the alliance, and that's why we're coming back to you. The IGA itself has not changed at all. However, we have added a new member, Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority, referred to as Mountain Line, to the IGA. And this will be for a new period of 10 years, effective from the final signature. And if there's any questions, I'm here and Jack Fischett also to assist with questions.
Thank you so much. Council, any questions? Is there a motion to read Resolution?
Vice Mayor, this is Charlie. Read Resolution Number 2020-56 by title only.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. There's a motion to read Resolution Number 2020-56 by title only from Councilmember Odegaard, with a second from Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion, city council?
Yes, Vice Mayor. I'd just like to take a minute and express my appreciation of having Mountain Line jump aboard. I know it will benefit all of those in this partnership, so thank you very much. It's a smart thing to do these days.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. And I full-heartedly agree. As someone who's been attending these meetings with members of the City of Flagstaff and the rest of our partners, it'll be a great enhancement to have Mountain Line at the table and continue this effort in partnership that we have here in Northern Arizona. All those in favor, council?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of Northern Arizona University, the City of Flagstaff, Coconio County, Coconio County Community College District, Flagstaff Unified School District, Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll go ahead and provide the second. There's a motion to adopt by Councilmember McCarthy, Resolution Number 2020-56, and a second by myself. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us down to 9A of our agenda, which is a discussion item, case number PZ1900125, update to the zoning code 2020, high occupancy housing site specific plan. Staff's recommendation is to hold a work session to allow the city council and the public to ask questions, seek clarifications, have discussions, offer comments, and provide direction on the proposed amendments. Mr. Seimer? Dan, are you with us?
Yes, sorry, just the mute was stuck. Hi, this is Dan Seimer, zoning code manager for the City of Flagstaff. And what we got before you today is the high occupancy housing specific plan, zoning code text amendment. This is hopefully our last work session before you, before we come back with a formal recommendation for adoption. Just a few housekeeping things. The work session objective is to inform the public and allow for their suggestions and concerns, to inform the council also for their suggestions and questions and discussion. No action will be taken at the city council work session. Just for those that are new to the high occupancy housing text amendment, the high occupancy housing plan was adopted to fulfill the community's goals of the regional plan to determine where it is appropriate for student-type housings and where those should be implemented throughout our city and to be consistent with the character. Also, it refines the goals and policies pertaining to the high occupancy housing mixed-use buildings and activity centers and preserves the character of existing historic neighborhoods. The purpose of the zoning code amendment is to implement the high occupancy plan and associated regional plan goals to address smaller high occupancy housing development types, remove the rooming and boarding provisions. On the screen before you, the amendment includes several items, including definitions, the zones that these type of high occupancy housing developments will be allowed, the maximum dwelling unit and bedroom per acre provisions, specific to used property development standards, those are development standards very specific to the high occupancy housing development, additional conditional use permit criteria, vehicle and parking requirements, and transit parking reduction programs. Today, we're going to be hitting on just a handful of housekeeping items from our August 25th agenda, when we talked about this last. At the last meeting, the council asked us to change- when we talked about this last. At the last meeting, the council asked us to change the definition of a single-family high occupancy housing development. And as the screen before you, the red text was what was there and the blue text is what council asked us to revise it to. So, a high occupancy housing development that is a single-family detached or attached dwelling will now be considered any unit with seven or more bedrooms and five or five or more sanitation facilities. Now, during that discussion, there was a trickle-down effect of this modification that council asked us to come back with you on, and those are particularly the duplex and triplex developments. To achieve that, again, the red text is the old and the new text is in blue, the duplex was moved up from six units to seven, or six bedrooms to seven bedrooms total with each, total for both units. So, you can have a four and three, five and two, but you can have no more than seven without getting a conditional use permit. And then, we also modified the definitions, and you'll see this consistently throughout, to do away with the bathroom to sanitation ratio and just go with the four bedroom, or four bathrooms or more. So, the concern last time that we had was what, where could the additional bedrooms get to for these duplexes and triplexes? I'll get to that in a few seconds, because we did add some additional regulations about that. But addressing the definitions first, we, as a show on here, we increased the bedrooms total from six to seven and modified that sanitation ratio. That ratio continues through the triplex or three units. So, again, the red and the blue text again, the one or more dwelling units containing four bathrooms or more would be considered a high occupancy housing, maintaining A, which is the total of nine bedrooms, in a three-unit development. Also, as it pertains to those developments with 40 units or greater, we did away with the bedroom to sanitation facility ratio and just use the four or more sanitation facilities in any one dwelling unit. Same thing goes for mixed use developments, maintain that same sanitation facility ratio of no more than four, or excuse me, four or more and got rid of the ratio itself. Also, there were some kind of trickle-down effects that we are incorporating as a cleanup. This particular standard is regarding the distribution of bedrooms for larger developments. And when we started moving the bedrooms, maximum number of bedrooms for the single-family dwelling units around, it kind of had this trickle-down effect. So, what we did here is we applied the distribution to a development that has four dwelling units or more and clarified that a single-family is not applicable, just simplifying the text as it pertains to those. And as I insinuated earlier, there was a concern about the two-unit and three-unit HOH developments, about getting a high number of bedrooms per unit, essentially getting back to the potential that you can have, seven bedrooms for each unit. So, what we, what we added was a cap to the duplex and triplex for high occupancy housing development. So, a two-unit HOH or MOHD development can have no more than a total of 10 bedrooms and a three-unit can have no more than a total of 12. So, that addresses that concern that potentially opened up with a runaway number that was, as a result of increasing the single-family. Also, we added a provision that we were talking about. We were relying on the general plan description as it pertains to, to activity centers when they cross over each other, and I'll show that as an example. When there's two activity centers with circles that cross over, the bigger, I'm sorry, the more restrictive applies, but we apply that into the code. And what we mean by that is, as you can see on the screen where the Route 66 sign is, you have the historic activity center, which is in the blue, crossing over the suburban one at Milton and Route 66. The standards now clearly state that the more restrictive applies, which is consistent with the regional plan, and we chose to make that codified instead of relying on the general, the regional plan itself. So, that's an additional change. And at the request of the Police Department, we made a modification to the crime-free multi-housing provisions that apply unless exempted. Now, the crime-free multi-housing provisions is a rental program and it does not apply to owner, owner-occupied dwellings. So, this provision gives them the option to exempt those owner-occupied dwellings are regulated under separate code amendments or code provisions and not under the crime-free multifamily housing program. So, that just clarifies the intent of the program. Additionally, we made some modifications that the waste management, the typical floor plan alternatives, and the adequate transit facility requirements apply to HOH and MOH developments that are, contain four dwelling units or more. Finally, we are anticipating a planning commission in, at the end of the month on October 28th and returning to the council on November 3rd and 17th. So, if you have any questions at this time, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seimer. Counsel, any specific questions? And if not, I'd like to take this public comment and then open it up for a dialogue. Does anyone have any specific questions on this presentation? Not seeing any. See Clerk, should we, can we take that public comment?
Just, just one moment. Vice Mayor, I'm trying again just in case I misdialed. Tyler, you're ready and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling in today because I'm concerned about the council's performance on Flagstaff's housing affordability issue. As a quick recap, in 2016, the Coconino County Community Needs Assessment was published, and in 2017, the Econa Housing Attainability for the Flagstaff Workforce Report was published. The two reports both came to the same conclusion that ours, sorry, that housing affordability is the number-one issue facing moderate to low-income residents, making friend of plethora of unsettling details about its scope and severity, including the fact that 43% of Flagstaff residents pay over a third of their gross income in housing costs. Both reports agree that the heart of the issue is a lack of housing supply and that the issue won't get better until housing supply is increased. Now, that was four years ago and what happened since? Well, median home prices increased an astounding 40%. The issue did not improve. It didn't even stay the same. It got drastically worse. This is undeniably a policy failure on behalf of the Flagstaff City Council. Now, I would love to dig into the details of this failure, but I don't have enough time in three minutes. Essentially, the council failed because they did not allow Flagstaff housing supply to increase enough. Often, they actively decreased housing supply by blocking developments, shrinking allowable building heights, and leaving untouched mandated setbacks in parking minimums. In light of this failure and the often sly ways in which the Flagstaff City Council makes housing affordability worse, I have three proposals. First, the council should pass a resolution that housing affordability is a top concern with relevant metrics designated, like median home and rent prices, so its performance can be tracked. Now, I realize that those are lagging metrics because of how long housing can take to be built once authorized, but without an objective standard, you end up in the scenario of everyone claiming to care about housing affordability for four years while the issue gets steadily worse. Second, the council should mandate that housing supply impacts be part of staff reports on proposed developments, zoning changes, such as case number PZ 1900125 being discussed today, and other relevant policy decisions. If these impacts aren't explicitly stated, the council won't be able to adequately evaluate trade-offs in policy decisions. Third, the city council should increase engagement with the majority of Flagstaff residents who rent, particularly the large portion of Flagstaff renters who are severely cost burdened. City council meetings and community engagement forums tend to be dominated by politically active homeowners who are unaffected by housing affordability. If the council received more representative feedback, they would find it easier to make the tough decisions needed to increase housing supply. Now, I hope you give due consideration to these three proposals and thank you very much for your time.
Nice. Thank you, Tyler. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Tyler, can you please send what you read or what you said by email to Mayor and Counsel, please?
Yes, I can send it as a response to the email I received about the, the call. Would that be okay?
Yes, I'll forward that to Mayor and Counsel.
Yeah. Is there, is there any other recommendation that you want to state?
Well, in terms of recommendations that are timely, I would strongly, I know there's a proposal being considered to decrease the building heights in several portions of the city through zoning changes. I would recommend against this as, again, by decreasing the height of the building, you decrease the amount of housing that can be built in that area. Aside from that, it's really just a general principle of need to evaluate the impact of these policy decisions on housing affordability. Is this decision going to increase housing supply and is it not? And it may be the case that for many policy decisions, it's still the best choice to go with the option that decreases housing supply. But if it's not being considered at all, we're not likely to make the decision that's better for housing affordability in cases where it would be appropriate.
Thank you, Tyler. I'm just curious, do you represent any organization or association?
Tyler, are you still there? I think you might have muted yourself.
Tyler?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I do not represent any organizations. The issue is just personal to me. In the past three years alone, I've lost a couple good friends and unfortunately, my own brother, who left Flagstaff because they weren't able to find a decent living situation. Some of them moved down to Phoenix. My brother moved back to Kentucky. So, it's personal to me.
Well, thank you so much for, for, for speaking up and taking your time to, to articulate your, your perspective and your story. Be well, Tyler. Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Tyler, stay, stay close because we have more questions for you. Councilmember Whelan?
Thank you so much, Tyler, for putting it in very clear, concise, and measurable terms. I happen to agree with you. I, I would also love to see you apply for the housing commission that council has set up, because we have a lot, lot of work to do in the future. I believe that, you know, your, your request to, to have it acknowledged when council decides something to at least acknowledge, is it going to help our affordable housing or is it going to harm or perpetuate the crisis is an excellent one. And I believe Mick Lopez has asked us for years to do that. And so, I strongly recommend that, that, that we are in housing crisis. It's time that we all look at it that way and that it be measurable. So, I appreciate your words. I think we are in a dilemma because, you know, in one breath, we, we want lower buildings and the next breath, we want a sustainable, you know, dense area because that makes sense when we move into the future. It's the way to go. So, hopefully this council and the following councils will be able to, to hit this head-on. And Councilmember Salas, thank you for asking that this be put in writing and hopefully, council members will carry this forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. See Clerk?
That's the last public comment.
Wonderful. Counsel, comments, questions for Mr. Seimer in regards to what we were presented? Councilmember Whelan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would just like to, to thank Mr. Seimer and his colleagues for all the considerations, the hard work that they've placed in this. And, and I get that when it's brought before council and we ask that it be, again, changed and do things, it must be a very frustrating process. But I think you've come up with a good document. And, and again, I'm just so appreciative of the hard work that you and your department have done here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. I too want to thank Dan and the rest of the staff for all the hard work that's gone into this. I asked a lot of questions over the last couple of months and they've always been taking my questions seriously. And in some cases, they've led to changes and other cases, they didn't because they didn't make sense. I would just like to point out that yes, everything we do on zoning codes has some impact in the price of housing, but there are other factors too. For instance, just yesterday, this council had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and talked to a person in the building industry, and he pointed out that the price of lumber has gone up 200% in the, this year. And that basically means a two-by-four costs three times as much now as it did like last February. So, and, and he pointed out that the sheet rock prices have gone up in a similar fashion. So, as a councilperson that's trying to address the wants and needs of the community about they, they're really sick of these big buildings, and then the second- they're really sick of these big buildings, and then the second issue that we hear about is that the price of housing keeps going up and up and up, it's kind of frustrating that the things that we do to encourage more housing construction sometimes don't yield as much results as we had hoped they are. But I want to assure the public that we are working on these issues. And as the liaison to the Housing Commission, I have been pushing for and will continue to push for a discussion about how can we work with developers and builders to make it easier for them to build more housing here. And we got into some of those discussions a little bit yesterday, but I think we need a focused discussion on those things, and I hope that will be coming. So, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. And just to jump on that, you know, I think it's safe to say and I think everybody knows this, we're growing. Flagstaff is growing, and our construction has been what's been carrying us through this pandemic financially and keeping the city afloat in many ways. And so, for me personally, just to share with the public and also with council, you know, as council already knows from my perspective, it's not a question of if we're going to build, it's how we're going to build. And I've heard that, you know, argument about, well, if you lower the heights, you're going to take away from the potential ability of dense infill. And that might be true in the short term, but I don't think our communities are ready to see our zoning code maxed out around, you know, Flagstaff. That would be just devastating. You know, what we've seen so far has already been somewhat of a shell shock to the community. And, you know, as Tyler mentioned, like comments, we have a need for it. You know, we are desperately in need of housing to stay caught up to the demand, and especially affordable housing and low-income housing. So, I'm very excited about the things that we're working on. I'm very pleased with Mr. Seimer's efforts with the zoning code and Tiffany and Dan and the rest of the team. I think that this will help shape the growth that we're seeing to be more palatable and appropriate for our community and better reflect our community in the developments and in those who are going to occupy the developments. And so, I'm very excited about this moving forward and invite any member of the public to engage through the Housing Commission and Planning and Zoning, and of course, with the City Council, to be heard and be part of this process. Any other comments, council, or questions? Not seeing any. We can move on. Mr. Seimer, thank you so much. We're going to move down to item number nine on our agenda, which are discussion items. And nine A, oh, sorry, I think we already did that one. That brings us down to item number 10 on our agenda, which is council liaison reports. Council, please cue yourselves up. Councilmember Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Since I'm the liaison for BPAC, on Wednesday, the 30th, there was a mural celebration of a couple murals that were here in Flagstaff. One is at the Boys and Girls Club that was done by Isaac. Oh, Isaac's last name escapes me for the moment. Caruso, Isaac Caruso. That mural that was done at the Boys and Girls Club over there in Brandon Homes community was donated from Isaac to the community. It's part of a children's book that he's working on now. And he did it because he wanted to give back to the community. He attended NEU at one time, and he lived in the area. And when there was an opportunity of giving back, he did it, and he did it at no charge to the community. And the other one was done by the Muriel Mice that's in the East Flagstaff Community Library. It's in their tween section, I guess, between the younger kids and teenagers, kind of that middle school age. Hopefully, the East Flag Library will be back open in the near future, and we can see it. And that project was a collaboration between youth and the community for the design of it, and it looks great. So, that's the only comment I have concerning council liaison report. So, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Odegaard. Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I am a member of the NACOG, Northern Arizona Council of Governments, and I'd like to thank all of you who attended the Economic Recovery Summit that was held on the 29th of September. And the idea was to get Northern Arizona governments together along with other partners and just see what they had to offer. We had a great turnout. We had individuals that brought in many different ideas and presentations we had from the governor's office. We had federal and state senators and representatives. And in all in all, I hope you enjoyed and found that summit meaningful. The next day, we did have Economic Development Council meeting. And because it was one day, and then the next day, we didn't have much time to be able to process what we learned and what we're doing next. But there is more to come. And I can't tell you, council, how important membership in NACOG is. And I would hope that we would have strong representation as Flagstaff City Council, not only in NACOG and its committees, and especially the Economic Development Council. So, thank you for listening. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
My pleasure. Anybody else on council? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and move down to the next agenda on our next agenda item, which is 11, Future Agenda Item Requests. And 11A is a fair request made by Councilmember Whelan to place on a future agenda, future agenda discussion about the current process for reclaimed water agreement, agreements, contracts, and the renewals and discussion to change that process so that all agreements and the renewals become before the Water Commission and council for approval. Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you so much, council. And I'm glad that I still see Ryan Roberts here, and I hope that Aaron Young is still here. Right now, all our renewals and contracts, well, not contracts, contracts go through a process that they would first come to the Water Commission. Water Commission would make a recommendation to council. Council would approve any new reclaimed water contracts. What has happened in the past, other councils have decided that any renewals of those contracts would solely stay administrative, and that would be our Director of Water Services, I believe, has that responsibility to decide whether it will be renewed or whether it won't be renewed. Currently, we're in many exciting things. We're looking at reclaimed water master plans. We're also looking at water resource master plan study. A ask for citizens' participation just came out to continue or to begin a discussion on what do we do with the reclaimed water that is not used, and how do we prioritize it? What is its worth? And, you know, this is perfect timing because, again, I'd like to congratulate everyone for the two awards that they've won. But I also believe that this is a shared responsibility, and that when we begin to ponder what is our water worth? What is our reclaimed water worth? Are we going into a one-water belief? And what will that mean to our reclaimed water? And will it take on the same values? So, I believe that these are going to be difficult decisions. And rather than those decisions to, and I mean by renewing the contracts, because if we're now saying reclaimed water is as important as potable water, then those decisions, whether to renew the contract or not, should be in council's hands and not be an administrative decision. So, that's why I brought this back up. I'm hoping that I'll have another council member, two council members, to move this forward. I hope we can really take a look at it and vote before I leave, but that's why it's here before you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, council, are there two members of council in favor of this agenda item moving forward?
Sure. I support this going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Salas, go ahead. Oh, I apologize, Councilmember Salas. Let me go up to Councilmember McCarthy first, I believe. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember McCarthy.
I am supportive of a council discussion on this matter.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for bringing this forth, and I would support the council discussion moving forward with this item.
So, looks like we have two in favor of this moving forward, and I see our city attorney is wanting to provide a comment. And I believe the second part of what you're asking, Councilmember Whelan, is for this to be expedited, but let's go to Sterling.
That's correct.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and council. Understanding that you want to move this forward to a discussion, just be aware that I will do an executive session for you prior to that discussion.
Understood.
I'd like nothing less. So, Stacy, City Clerk, just for clarification, Councilmember Whelan has two members in support, those being Councilmembers Aslan and McCarthy. Do we now take a second vote to see if there's enough to expedite?
Sterling, I'm going to have to defer to her.
Vice Mayor, council, it's not a second vote. It's just are there enough council members in support of expediting it, which you would need a total of four.
Okay. So, council. Councilmember Odegaard.
I would be in favor of expediting, so thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm in favor of expediting this, but on the other hand, I think we need to know what we'd be pushing behind. For instance, I'm not in favor of pushing this in front of the police discussion that we already said was extremely high priority. But I do favor moving this to the front of the list. I guess I would have to ask the city clerk what we would be pushing backwards if we did approve this.
Let's go to city clerk.
Sorry, I'm opening the working calendar right now.
Ms. Salzberg, if she can answer for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. So, looking at the working calendar as it currently stands, we have one other item that was expedited, and that is the change in the zoning code to allow for commercial mixed-use areas in student housing developments to be converted to permanent affordable housing. So, if this item were to be expedited, the way that it stands, it would come before this item, the affordable housing item, unless council would like for it to come after.
Okay, thank you so much, City Clerk. I'm going to go to, let me go back to Councilmember McCarthy, and then we're going to go to Ms. Salas.
So, I just wanted to clarify that if we do this expediting, that we would, that would have no effect on the police discussion because that's already on the calendar.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, then I am supportive of this.
Councilmember Salas.
I am in support of expediting this item after the first two items that were already expedited, or in the expedited queue, which is number one, the police discussion, number two, the mixed-use commercial units on high occupancy housing.
I would agree with that, Vice Mayor.
Okay. I was going to come back to you to ask you that. Councilmember Odegaard.
Yeah, and that's what I was just going to follow up, and Councilmember Whelan provided an answer for that, so I'm good.
Very good. Are there, there are four in favor of this moving forward expeditedly. Are there any other comments on this before we move on to the next agenda item?
I would just like to thank everyone.
Thank you. That brings us down to item number 12 on our agenda, which is 12A, City Manager Reports. City Manager Clifton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council. I hope that I'm audible to you. You have a report in the packet. Nothing is called out for discussion, just a few updates, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. And it was an excellent report, as always. Any members of council like to provide a question or a comment?
I believe I would, Vice Mayor. Could we hold on for a minute?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. City Manager, I had a question about, it seems as though we're moving forward on hirings or on searches for our police chief and water services. Is that correct?
It's correct in part, Councilmember Whelan. I provided to you a bit of a timeline, a more specific timeline with respect to water services. The police chief, there's a little narrative on the recruitment there. So, both those processes are targeted to be resumed.
Yes.
In the weeks ahead with a timeline roughly to have recruitments, the recruitment process finished and the positions filled, maybe not occupied per se, but at least the candidate selected probably in the timeframe of January of the upcoming year.
Thank you. And I did take into account that. I'm just wondering, I thought at our last discussion, we were going to continue to keep things on hold. So, you might, I guess I'm asking, are you finding the need to move forward on these two positions? And I guess my answer is rhetorical, so yes, you are.
Well, if I may, Councilmember, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
Your question's a very good one, and the answer is that it will greatly depend on what comes of the recruitment processes.
Very good.
Just to bring you back a little bit in time, if I may, council member, when we put both these recruitments on hold, and that was back during when we put both these recruitments on hold, and that was back during the springtime, late springtime, early summer, it was prior to council's recess. We informed you then that our hope was to delay them until the end of the calendar year. So I do think we're on track with that, but the relevance of your question, it is not entirely rhetorical. It is that we were not, we won't know until we go into the recruitment process that we'll have finalists that emerge from that process. One possibility is is that we continue to keep it open because we do not have candidates that we feel are, would fit as finalists. So there's never a certainty to this until we get through the process. Does that help answer your question, Councilmember? And I apologize that I cut you off before you were finished with your commentary.
No, no, I, I, I agree with you, and I think all of council agrees with you. We, when we were searching for you, we certainly went through that type of process. So understood, just wanted some clarity. I appreciate what you had to say, so thank you.
And thank you for the questions. One more caveat on that, if I may. And I would invite either or both of the deputy city managers who are quite engaged with their respective recruitment processes to jump in here and offer any qualifying comments. But it is our hope, our intent, while there will be some overlapping of these processes, is not to have them coincide exactly. We want to have enough of a gap between the recruitment processes to allow for the assemblage of good panel reviews and good interview processes and follow-up referrals and inquiries and so forth. And we see the wisdom in doing that rather than have them coincide exactly. So you can expect a little bit of staggering on that, council. Do either of the deputy city managers have any additional comments?
I don't, Greg. That seemed to sum it up nicely. We have taken very careful thought to our process going forward. I'm working very closely with Shannon. Shannon's working closely with me and in HR, just to make sure that those timelines respect the fact that these are very important decisions to be made for the organization. And we, and at the same time, very taxing on our, on our limited human resource staff. So we are, we are mindful of moving these ahead responsibly, but in light of our resource staffing. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager Anderson, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so, Vice Mayor Shimonie, unless any other council members have questions about the process, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wieland, were you, were you finished? Or did you have any follow-ups?
I was, Vice Mayor, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And then my only comments on the report, you know, was just also just recognizing the Flagstaff Water Services for these national water conservation awards that we've received, placing the city at the forefront of Arizona's municipalities in its conservation efforts. I'm just reading from the report. The excerpt is from the Water Services website. Okay, this speaks about the part below, but great report. Definitely check it out if you haven't. Members of the public, it is attached to our agenda under this agenda item. City Manager, when you spoke about in your report, the airport parking at the airport being postponed, I'm not too sure if this is a comment for you or for Heidi or for Adam or or maybe Mr. Burrellstein, but I just read that we were talking about four EV spaces for electrical vehicle charging. And I would just like for us to explore more effective and efficient ways to put in more spaces. I believe there's such a thing as a station that can help, like one station can provide, fill and charge to their four different actual parking spots. So if we had four stations, that gets us to 16 pretty darn quick. And from my understanding, they're not that expensive to do. And I know that the, like, the cost to retrofit our parking lot after the fact with EV is going to be a lot more difficult than to just do it outright, doing it properly the first time around. So I'm not too sure what number I think is most appropriate, but I would like for us to explore that. And I just wanted to plant that seed with all of you tonight. Not sure if any follow-
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you finished, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Your comments are duly noted, and I think they are timely. And for the benefit of all, since we're talking about the airport, there is a bit of a delay in the project. We were, of course, approaching this project at the tail end of the construction season. Our window was rapidly closing. We were on schedule, frankly, and then had a bit of a setback in terms of having to renew a cultural study for the federal agency that administers these projects in part. And so we will, we're already, in fact, in motion to engage the services to have that cultural study, which is now over 10 years old, updated. And that will be submitted to the FAA. That's, that's going to be the, in the more immediacy of things. The concept plan for the new parking has been approved, to my knowledge, and all of that stuff will remain in place. We simply will tap the brakes on issuing the contract for this project right now with the targeted time of bringing that back in the spring, still subject to the current fiscal year. So we don't believe there will be budgetary impacts. Specific to your comments, Vice Mayor, I do think we, well, I don't think, we will have the discussion. We have a little bit of a team assembled on this. We do meet regularly. We will bring that to the table and talk about it. I've thought about it since you originally mentioned it in a previous conversation, Vice Mayor. And I do think that with the, what is now the existing lot in the front becoming likely a short-term parking lot and the new lot in the back becoming a long-term parking facility, it makes sense to have charging stations in both. It probably makes a lot of sense to have the charging stations in the short-term parking where they are likely to be more needed. And considering the length of occupants who might be utilizing those parking spaces, it might make more sense. So I think you could expect to see those types of facilities in both parking structure, parking facilities, parking lots, rather. And we will be reporting back to council with an exact timeline and more details, including the one that has been raised. That will be a discussion that will occur between now and the end of this calendar year. Sorry for the long-winded response, but thank you for the opportunity.
I appreciate that response, and thank you. And I agree, the short-term parking lot, I think, is, is much more preferable to really kind of packing in these EV spots than the long-term spots. And then my last comment on the report, and then I put Rick Tatter on the spot if he's with us. You know, we talked about the building industry being a healthy revenue for the city. And, and Mr. Tatter, if you're on the call, I believe you might be, if you can just speak to some of the numbers that we're seeing at a high level and just kind of give the council and really the public a little bit more of an understanding as to what, what we're talking about in terms of this revenue source. I would appreciate that.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. This is gonna take me a minute to pull up the report we provided council, I think, a week ago. You know, but, you know, one thing of note is the building revenues, the permit revenues that were received last year are really those kind of one-time revenues that we, we see sometimes in our general fund. We don't rely on those for an ongoing resources. You know, this recession period is different than it has been in the past. The last-
Rick, I think you muted yourself.
Looks, looks like I did. Thank you for, for letting me know. Not sure how far I got in that. You know, but, you know, in general, building revenues are one of those things that we rely on as one-time resources in our general fund. We don't never expect some of the trends that we're seeing now. And I'm not sure if you heard me say, in fact, in past recessions, building is not one of the stronger areas that has provided revenues to the city. Those, those kind of struggled. And actually, tourism was strong back in the older recessions. But still, if you give me a minute, I, let me take a break, and I will go find last week's presentation and get some numbers for that.
You know what, council, why don't we take a five-minute break and reconvene at 4:25? City Clerk, does that work?
Yes.
Okay, let's reconvene at 4:25 in five minutes. Thank you. All right, welcome back, everybody. Mr. Tatter, please continue.
All right. I'm going to pull up the presentation we provided to council recently. Let me put this in presentation mode here real quick. So, you know, as, as we talked, yeah, year-end, for certain revenues exceeded what our projections were. You can see the top area, that sales tax did come in in February. And the big number that was talked about is the building permits, kind of in the middle of the screen here, where you can see those exceeded our projections by over a million dollars. But just, you know, sometimes these are looked at one-time resources. They're not necessarily ongoing resources. And that million dollars was a result of really two projects that pulled their permits in the April timeframe of last year. So, yeah, we did have some great revenues from our building permits through year-end. And then the construction contracting line of sales tax, while, while it exceeded our projections we had in February, you could see it exceeded by almost $300,000. It did not meet our budget for last year. So there was some good news, bad news, when it, news when it came to the construction contracting side of our sales tax. It performed well, but not as well as budget. Moving forward, we've talked about construction contracting in the current year is doing very well. Currently, we're up $160,000 over last year. You know, but, you know, this could be cyclical, cyclical, and we need a little more time to see where these revenues are going to turn out. When we look at our recession plan and our four scenario forecasting, we're not quite confident that building permits are going to stay at the level it did last year. We're not going to meet the 3 million that I, that we saw last year. And we're being conservative on those estimates. So you can see toward the bottom, that building permits, right now, we're actually projecting them to be a little bit under what we budgeted. So the, yeah, more months to go by, more time to see these numbers perform are needed for this area. And then I'm gonna go to one more slide, which was the last slide in the, in the presentation. We didn't go over this, but you could see contracting. We budgeted at a $1.7 million for sales tax for contracting. We do expect that one to be doing pretty well this year and exceeding budget by $100,000 or so. So that's a quick rundown of the numbers related to construction. Hopefully, that met what you were looking for.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Tatter. And I see Mr. Clifton, City Manager, has a comment.
Thank you. And thank you, Rick Tatter, for the recap of the information from last week. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the question. I just want to add what is hopefully obvious, but it can never be stated too often. And that is that, you know, we're in the third phase of our recession plan, which in turn is predicated upon a 5% to 10% decrease across the board of all revenues. And we are appropriately within that phase of the recession plan. In other, in other words, right now, that is what we are seeing across the spectrum between 5% and 10% declines. So the, the numbers that Rick has shared with you illustrate that one particular component of our revenue stream has helped mitigate the losses. But that is the, the extent of that discussion, is that we, we're doing where we should be in the recession plan. And, and that is one revenue stream that has seen a healthy year last year and this year. I would echo Rick's comments that it is a cyclic sort of thing that happens in the building industry. And we had anecdotal discussion from individuals in yesterday's joint meeting with the chamber that were most certainly indicating a slowdown, at least with respect to commercial development in, in the forecast. But that's anecdotal. We don't have that data yet, and it's all out there. But it's something to be aware of as we think of this in a cyclic mode. You know, the, the ebb and flow of the building industry has been strong, but that there are no guarantees that it will stay strong. We certainly hope that it does. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Yeah, I just found it interesting and just thought we should bring it, additional attention to it for everybody's sake, that it is doing well for us now. But as you, as both of you mentioned, it's not something we can predict or really count on, and that it is cyclical. Mr. Tatter.
Vice Mayor, yeah, just as you say, this is just one category of all of our revenues. You, you can't just pull out one and expect that we have resources to do things. You really have to look at the whole of the organization. We're fortunate that, you know, our revenues are about a third from sales tax, a third from state shared revenues, and then a third from property tax, license permits, and other things. So we're in a, in a good position where you need those types of balances, and you don't just pick out those individual revenues that are performing extremely well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that comment. Great, so that's, that moves us down to item 13A of our agenda, which is our COVID-19 updates and our COVID-19 and re-entry plan updates. I am gonna hand this off to Deputy City Manager Anderson, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm gonna pull up the presentation here for you. And we'll begin this slideshow. So what I have for you this evening is a data update. So we'll go through all of the information from the Coconino County website and weekly report, the Arizona Department of Health Services dashboard, as well as the Northern Arizona Healthcare Census information. The first chart that I have for you here is the number of weekly cases. This was from the Coconino County Health and Human Services website. You will see the numbers that we looked at last week for September 19th did increase from the 178 to the 290 here. At the end of the week of September 26th, we were at 225 cases in the Flagstaff area. When we look at the number of weekly cases, this was as of last Friday. Since then, we've been seeing a smaller number of new cases from September 27th through September 30th. The number of hospitalizations for Coconino County residents did see a slight increase from five to eight this last week, this weekend ending September 26th. But the good news is, is the COVID-related deaths did drop down to zero for that same timeframe. Our community transmission rate is still the moderate level. I did share with city council, so I'd like to mention it here, that the Arizona Department of Health Services did change how we interpret the community transmission rate. What they have stated is that a community would have to experience all three benchmarks. So the cases, the percent positivity, as well as the COVID-like illnesses. so the cases, the percent positivity, as well as the COVID-like illnesses, all in substantial for the overall level of community transmission to change to substantial. So because we only have the number of cases in substantial, that's why you still see our moderate level of community transmission. So this was the information that they included with that explanation. I wanted to provide it in the packet so community members could see it, just in case they haven't visited their website lately. This is the Arizona Department of Health Services dashboard. Again, when you look at cases per 100,000, we are in the substantial for both of those, but because we're in moderate and minimal for the other two, our overall transmission rate on their dashboard will remain moderate as well. Remember, this is a little bit of a different timeframe. This data is through September 13th, to where the data that we were looking at from Coconino County was through the 26th. There's a two-week lag. Lastly, here I have for you the Northern Arizona Healthcare Hospital Census. We did see a decline both in the number of positive cases as well as pending cases, so our capacity to care for the seriously ill is still in very good shape. I'll turn it over to you, Vice Mayor Schmoni, in case Council has any questions or you'd like to discuss this further.
Thank you so much, W.C. Manager. Councilmember Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Anderson. On that first graph where we saw the spike as far as cases, yep, right there. And then we saw a high of 290, and then we see a 225. Is that 225 the final number, or we're still waiting for other things to come in?
But, excuse me, Councilmember Odegaard, there can be a delay in testing about four to seven days. So just like we saw the number for the week of September 19th go up, there is an opportunity for that 225 to increase as well. Usually it comes out a week later, so we should know more this Friday. There also can be a delay on the electronic lab reporting because it doesn't go directly to the county as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whelan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I'd just like to express, I'm choosing my words. You know, I get that we're in a process of trying to figure out what direction we're taking, where the numbers come from. But this consistent changing of dashboards, of data, of who's counting what, leads me to lessen my belief in the accuracy of, of a lot of these numbers. And I've said that all the way through, I think you can attest to that, Vice Mayor. When we were on the calls with the county, it just seemed like a bait and switch throughout the whole thing. And this does not by any means reflect on the county, but it's the entire process. And, and now we're sitting in the end of September at 225, which is higher than our peak of the last time. And again, the rules on the dashboard have changed, that now we'll stay in the yellow zone because we have partly green for the hospitalizations, and then we have a critical because of case count. So I, I just wanted to express, you know, is this really an average? Is that what, what we chose to do, take an average of horrible and good, and you're sitting in moderate? I believe that Shannon, in your information that you sound out today, sent out today, we're in the 6% range of positivity, correct?
I think it was 7%, if I remember correctly.
Was it 7%? I think you're right. I think you're right, because it really caught my eye. So, so, you know, lots of questions, and, and this by no means reflects your presentation. I hope you know that, Shannon. It's just a frustration of the process. And, you know, I don't see any kind of baseline we compare anything to. And so it's challenging. It's very challenging, and I can see why people are confused with the numbers and the data and what it all means. So thanks for hearing me out, Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. W.C. Manager, can you go back to that first slide with that, that graph? It shows us spiking. So again, you know, we're seeing numbers and COVID numbers in our community that are higher than our peak in June, and then over the summer. I think it's clear to a lot of us that these are numbers coming from a younger population, and that's why our hospitals aren't seeing the, the buildup and the backup and the stress that they were in June and July, when it was more a community issue. Now it seems to be a student issue, both, you know, all students, really. But I think NAU is leading that charge to, and I know they're trying to mitigate. And so when we have these reports, W.C. Manager, I'd love for us to really kind of talk about the community partners like NAU, CCC, FUSD, and really kind of dive in a little bit to what they're doing and what they're not doing, and also the, the changes in their, in their plans, like, you know, contact tracing, we know to be the biggest thing we can do once we know someone's positive. And so if we have over, you know, 500 individuals in our community right now who are positive over the last couple of weeks, you know, if you add the last couple of weeks together kind of thing, how is that contact tracing going? My guess is, is we, I'm guessing that we're struggling to keep up. And I know that we just hired on contact tracers at NAU, or NAU finally did that themselves in partnership with the county. I just think that would be an important update to give, if you, if you could integrate that into your update. Do you have anything to add on contact tracing and that effort across the county and city?
Vice Mayor, I think you covered it well. NAU did hire, if I recall the number correctly, five individuals to help with contract, con- contract tracing. The county is in the process of training those individuals. I do have Josh Mayer from NAU coming to our October 20th, so our next update, to provide Council with an update from NAU. Certainly, I could invite FUSD and CCC to see if they're able to join that meeting as well, if you would like.
You know, I, I thank you. I really think NAU is probably at the core of it all. As FUUD, FUSD sees classes and starts to reopen and maybe becomes more of a contributor, I definitely think we need to engage them as well. But it'd be great to engage them in, in these meetings on a regular basis, because this is, this is not a virus that's in the past, it's alive and well. And, and unfortunately, our students are the ones who are leading that charge. Do we, do we know if NAU has a live dashboard at this point?
I do not. Josh might be able to inform us as to what they have available during his update.
Okay, and I know that they're making adjustments to the way they test as well. Is that correct? Do you know about that?
I do not. The updates that we receive is actually from Coconino County Health and Human Services. So the only time that it includes NAU is if there's something new that they're partnering on, they'll usually provide that information to the community stakeholders. But they haven't said anything about changing their testing that I'm aware of.
Look, I know that they're transitioning, I believe, at some point in the foreseeable future away from the fieldhouse saliva test, and then just going through the, their on-campus health department. But we can, we can ask Josh about that and have him talk to us about that next time. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about these numbers. I also think it'd be great, maybe at a future conversation, that we can talk about events that are held in our community on city property, not necessarily events like on City Hall lawn, but at places like our airport in, in different hangars, and the cost of those events, and who it is that is paying for those events. Regardless of political affiliation, this is not political to me, this is about public health and something I'm very concerned about. So maybe we can have a follow-up conversation on that at some point. Unless you have anything to add, W.C. Manager?
I do not.
And then lastly, Council, I'd love to have us have a discussion about the ice rink and see if Rebecca Sayers can maybe talk to us a little bit about some of the efforts that have been done to try to figure out what the best path forward is for that ice rink, Jay Lively. And I just think that we should look into some of the options and consider moving forward with reopening of that facility, now that we're in, we're in phase three of our reopening plan. So, Ms. Sayers, are you on the call?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and City Council. This is Rebecca Sayers, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, Vice Mayor, I am here. So would you like to just hear a little bit about what we've planned for our opening of the ice rink?
Yes, please. What, what you've done and what you've planned for and where, where we're at looking forward.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. So we do have our staff back from furlough, that was a big push to get them back. We have also conducted some training for them. We did that over the last week, so they are ready to go when we do reopen. We have done a deep clean of the facility to get it ready, and we have installed Plexiglas barriers for staff that are working behind the counter, like where you get skates and where you take payments. We have signs on the floor for physical distancing. We have an entry and exit plan. But I think most importantly, we will be limiting the number of people in the building at any given time, so there would be a maximum of 20 visitors and six staff, or I'm sorry, three staff at, at all times. We would have two staff focused on the ice rink itself, on the ice, and then one staff person focused in the lobby. And we would also, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. We would be limiting the amount of time that those folks are in the buildings, so we would have a session, for example, of 45 minutes, and then a 30-minute downtime in between user groups to allow time for one group to leave and the other group to come in. The locker rooms would be closed, so people would need to come prepared to, you know, fully dressed and just put on their skates in the lobby and get on the ice. We would also be limiting it to rentals only, so no public skate. So rentals meaning groups like our Flagstaff Youth Hockey Association and some of our private hockey clubs that we have, and the Figure Skating Club would be good examples. Are there any further questions or further details I can provide?
That's great, Ms. Sayers. Can you talk a little bit about mask wearing indoors and what the requirements are?
Yes, masks would be required by all of our staff and the, the spectators and coaches. And then I believe that we would follow the, each user group is required to submit to us their return-to-play guidelines, and most of them dictate whether the participants playing hockey, for example, on the ice would need to wear masks. But a lot of hockey, especially youth hockey, have some sort of face shield already.
That's what I'm hearing, too. So if there was a council will to see that plan continue forward, what kind of timeline would you work with if, if you got that approval tonight, for example?
Well, we are prepared to open quickly, since we have done most of that training. I think we could be open in a week or less, if that was the direction of Council tonight.
Thank you so much, Council. What are your thoughts? Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Sayers or comments in regards to us opening up our Councilmember Whelan, are you?
Yes. You know, I, I've agreed with this. I thought Ms. Sayers presented a reasonable plan, a good plan. I know she and her staff have been working hard on trying to consider all the points, you know, and I brought up many times that we've got parents and kids loading in the car, heading down to find ice down south, and just that, you know, is endangerment, too. So I would agree with you, Vice Mayor, that it's probably time that we do that. How are the fields working out, Rebecca?
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for that question. The, the fields are, are doing well. Again, we're, we're relying on user groups to follow their own return-to-play guidelines and requirements that we reviewed and made sure that they're in compliance with the city's mandates, as well as any other guidelines. And for the most part, they're doing well. We've received a few complaints here and there, but the user groups are doing, really, I believe, the best that they can at trying to manage the number of participants on the field, as well as making sure people are distancing and wearing masks.
Well, thank you for that report and keep an eye on all things. It must be a huge responsibility, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whelan. Councilmember Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, we are in the phase, you know, as far as reopening facilities, which we have done with outdoor facilities that the city owns and manages. Seems like, you know, the ice skating rink is very similar to that. I would be in favor of allowing the ice rink reopening with everything in place, and also with the requirement that players or participants of the rink has to wear shields. And I think that should, should be a very doable request of the ask, if not, they're doing it already. And so that's my opinion, just because we are in phase three of the city reopening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, and quick follow-up for Ms. Sayers. If someone were to approach the building without a mask and be open to receiving one, could we give them one to keep?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, we do have a supply of masks that we could provide, that we could offer to them. And if they refuse to wear one coming in, we could offer other services, such as virtual meetings, et cetera.
So we wouldn't be allowing folks into our building who refuse to wear masks?
Of course, there are the exceptions outlined in the proclamation. So we would, I, I know that Shannon may be able to speak, too. The reentry team has discussed kind of how we manage that at our other The reentry team has discussed kind of how we manage that at our other city facilities, and we would do the same.
I know most of the athletes will have a shield over their helmets, their masks. So that definitely is a positive. I guess I'm still concerned about city staff that might be stuck in between the areas where they're coming in and going, in the lobby areas. So, yeah, Council, does anyone else want to weigh in on this topic? Right now, I think we have Councilmembers Whelan, myself, and Odegaard in favor with us moving forward in reopening the arena. W C Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shmoni. Rebecca, I just wanted to clarify. Staff will be behind Plexiglas barriers, correct? Unless they're out on the ice, like using the Zamboni or something?
Correct. We do have rink guards that do skate on the ice at times. And that's more usual for public skate and things like that to help monitor the activities on the ice. When we have a user group, yes, it would mostly be staff either behind Plexiglas. We will have staff out in the lobby cleaning the high-touch surfaces and the restrooms very regularly. But all of our staff will be in a face mask or a shield. We can provide both.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Rebecca.
Let's go to Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Yes, I'm in favor of reopening the Jay Lively Ice Skating Rink. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Sayers, one last question. I mean, obviously, we're going to have signage communicating all of the requirements. Like you said, there'll be staff. I guess, you know, as long as we're really making an effort to see the compliance we need to do this right and communicate with the leadership at Jay Lively and the different hockey groups. I know that they'll be very glad to hear that there is a majority of Council wanting to move forward. Let's go to Councilmember, let's actually jump to City Manager Clifton and then back to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you for the discussion, Vice Mayor and Council. I just want to give you all assurance that these details regarding compliance and all the what-if scenarios, which are all quite relevant, we are addressing these on a routine basis at the staff level. And we've gone through so many permutations of what can happen in the city facilities and how we will respond to it. And all, of course, in recognition of what the proclamation states and always, always with the premise that we want to keep our staff safe and we certainly want to keep the visiting public safe. So I know there's a lot of curiosity as to how the staff will respond to certain situations. I just want to give the Council assurance that this comes, this discussion that has happened this evening has actually been based on a lot of preparation that Rebecca and Shannon and others, many others, have been spending time with over the weeks and frankly, the months. So the preparation is quite high. And I do believe if Council is desirous, as we're hearing, is the case of opening that facility, I want to give you assurance that it will be opened with the greatest of care and very good forethought. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, it seems that the Council majority has spoken on this issue. But I would just like to point out that that last chart we looked at, that this week, since last March, there has only been one week that had a higher incidence of COVID in this town than this week. So it's amazing. This is the second worst week since March, and we're saying that's okay.
Councilmember McCarthy, I obviously really appreciate your comments and concern. And trust me, I'm right there with you. But, you know, the fact that we, I mean, either, in my opinion, either we shut it all down again and we say no usage of our tennis courts, of our basketball courts, of our fields, period in the story, and go backwards, or just continue to allow opportunity that is safe and accessible to people. You know, I guess I have more concern with basketball, basketball, for example, than with hockey, given the different precautions and distances and the way the game is played. But yeah, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate your comment. I just, I think that we have a plan that will be safe, that will work, and we can do our best to keep an eye on it as we kind of head through this storm.
I truly hope that's true.
Well, we'll keep an eye on, you know, the numbers, but it seems like with our hospital numbers down, you know, yeah, I'm not trying to get into like a back and forth with you, Councilmember McCarthy. Go ahead.
That's all right. But just as my last closing thought is that maybe we should do extra testing amongst people that are participating in our sports areas to see if, you know, if their incidence of contracting the disease is any higher or lower than other people. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
That's a really good idea, Councilmember McCarthy and Ms. Sayers. If there's any way that we can partner with the local organizations that are going to be utilizing that space to see if they wouldn't mind doing some kind of a regular sweeping test of all their players and coaches and staff. It's free. You will do it. It has a day turnaround. It's not a difficult test. It's uncomfortable. Maybe we can ask them for that type of a participation agreement?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would be happy to work with our user groups. What I wanted to comment on was that our user groups, as I'm sure many of you have heard from them, are so anxious to get back in the facility that I think they'll do, within reason, they'll do whatever they need to to get back on the ice. So just echoing the City Manager, I wanted to assure you that I think we have a good plan. We will do this safely. We have limited capacity that I think will automatically make this a safe environment, both for staff and the public. And you have our assurances on that.
Thank you so much. So in closing on this agenda item, I just wanted to go back up to what Mrs. Hanson said about NAU's website that's reporting that they're currently managing 127 cases. And between 9/2 and today, they've tested 10,300 students, faculty, and members of the public. And we're grateful as a city for that partnership with them and with ASU for that testing because without the data, it's definitely more difficult to make decisions and move forward. So thank you for that partnership in testing and thank you for that information, Ms. Hanson. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I was just thinking about when we were asking for added precautions that perhaps we also consider the use of taking temperatures as individuals come in. But I totally trust what our staff has come up with. And I hear what they're saying about groups are excited about getting in there. So it's as much precaution as possible. And I think we've been all doing a fine job with that. But I also hear Councilmember McCarthy.
Ms. Whelan, I think that's a great idea. Ms. Sayers, you know, they do that on campus at the fieldhouse where they just have you stand in front of a monitor that tells you what your temperature is. Have we looked at anything like that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I might have. Shannon, or I'm not sure if Stacy Breckler-Nags is still on the call, but I know that the city is part of our initial PPE purchase for staff. We did purchase a number of no-touch thermometers. And Recreation is in possession of a few of those. And we will have to do that whenever we open our indoor fitness centers. We can easily also add that to the list of requirements for Jay Lively.
I think that'd be worthwhile. Thank you, Councilmember Whelan and Ms. Sayers for that. Great. Not seeing any further comments, I'd like to move on to item number 14 of our agenda, which is informational items and reports from Council and staff, future agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have anything right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Odegaard?
Nothing tonight, Vice Mayor. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Nothing for tonight, but I thank you for your stellar effort in presiding the meeting tonight. Be well.
Thank you. I, you know, I was hoping we'd finish in record time and got a little slowed down, but I thought that was decent. Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, the sun is still up, so I'm happy. Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Whelan?
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. I have quite a few things. Just kidding. Before we go again, I would just like to shout out with Water Services and the entire group for the national conservation and sustainability. What a team effort that all was, and thank you. You know, as we were okaying the contract for the drilling, I just wanted to take a minute and thank Aaron Young and Ryan Roberts. I had many questions about why the hole was so deep. And they just came very considerate in their answers and gave good information. And, you know, I find that with our staff when we ask questions, they're willing to help and give us that information. So I just wanted to say thank you. I also heard from a little bird that Mr. Ryan Roberts saved us over $500,000 on that contract, on that drilling contract. So I wanted to say thank you so much for at least asking and you got it. So thank you. And that's all, Vice Mayor. Great meeting. Thank you for presiding over us. You did well.
Thank you so much and thanks for your update. I got just two things for the group. First thing being that it seems that the ability to register to vote has been extended from it being yesterday to October, I want to say it's October 23rd. Yep, October 23rd. So this is great news for our community and for the entire state in regards to voter registration and getting folks who maybe weren't going to vote, giving them another opportunity to register and be involved. So spread that word, spread that information. Let's get everyone registered to vote in the upcoming election. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out to Sarah Dar and her team, along with our partners in the South Side and Deb Harris, and just the effort of the South Side Neighborhood's plan. That was a long time coming and done so well. They received two awards at the IAP2 award ceremony that I got to attend and support last week. And Sarah Decter, thank you, Dan Folk, and everyone else who was part of that effort. That was a huge effort by the city and the community. And we are being recognized for that effort and in receiving these two awards and now being put into a competition for an international award for this effort. You know, I always say, you know, think global, act local, and that all politics are local. And here we are, leading the world and the nation in what it means to collaborate and work together with our community partners and our neighborhoods. So thank you all so much for your work with that. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful rest of your evenings. Enjoy the sunset.